Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 16th Farmington School Board Meeting. I will call the meeting to order if everybody could please run into the club. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, relatable, and that's for us.
That was throwing me off.
Yeah, we do have our superintendent designate Jim joining us via phone here. So he'll be on this little mic here.
Hi there.
Hello. All right. Make sure you're on these. Um, next up is public participation. Do you have anything to this evening? Next, student presentation for a Gaga pit proposal, which I'm very excited for because I have no idea what a Gaga pit is.
I think I know what it is, but I'm not sure I'm that cool.
Because I had Cheryl.
I know what it is.
Oh, I definitely have no idea. I had to give Cheryl. Cheryl gave me a little.
I'm at least two generations back.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this amazing opportunity to present the making of a Gaga ball pit. We're seeking up to a $600 investment for the school board for an 100% stake in a Gaga ball pit for the benefit of Henry Wilson Memorial School students. We've talked to Ms. Pomeroy and the facility manager, asked where we could put it without there being wires or electrical work. So we found a place in front of the swings.
We looked at Home Depot and Lowe's prices on the materials we need, and we have found that Home Depot is the more affordable choice. This Gaga ball pit could last up to 10 years if it is taken care of properly by the school and the people using it. The pit will be 15 feet across. I assure you that this game is safer than playing football or even playing tag if you play too rough. With a little bit of Mr. Henry's help, Logan Carrier, Joseph Melantin, Bryce Terrance will be making a Gaga ball pit. We are going to make a sign on the side of the of the pit to tell people what the rules are for how to use the Gaga ball pit. Gaga ball is a dodgeball-like game where you tag a player with a ball below the waist.
I thought there was somebody in the view. I was like, is there somewhere? Um, so for
When you say the swing set, I'm assuming you mean the one at Henry Wilson.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, now I saw a picture of a Gaga pit. Um, but I don't know if you want to explain to everybody that might not know what it is, kind of what it looks like and like how high, like as I know, some of them are higher than others. I don't know.
Does it got anything to do with lady?
Well, that's where I I thought so initially, but I was proven wrong.
We had one just.
Oh, so basically a Gaga ball pit is a hexagon wooden, um, like shape that has like walls. And there's usually like an entrance for people to go in and there's usually a ball. And if you like step out, then you're out. And if you get hit below the knees, you're out. And if the ball leaves the pit, you're out.
Well, I I saw that they have like pre-made kits, but it sounds like from what Bryce is saying, you guys are going to get the supplies and build it yourselves.
Yeah, it's a little bit cheaper.
And is it the whole? Is it the steam class that's going to be built or is it just would repair or?
The final assembly may be the class.
Right.
Does it have to be added to any notifications like with Primax for them to know that we've got this on site? Might be a question.
I don't know if they have an inventory of program equipment.
I know. I just was thinking about if you have a trampoline, your house insurance goes up. So the fact that Primax may need to just know that it's here doesn't sound like it's anywhere near as aggressive as football or some of the others.
The new science teacher at Henry Wilson is very aggressive when it comes to Gaga ball.
I I would like to learn how to play. Um, you know me, I
I just I'm just putting it out there. She's a beast.
How high are the walls? Or is it? Does it vary? I suppose maybe it does. I don't know.
Three feet.
Three feet high. Yeah.
I would assume that extra money would be could be used for this or should we? Is there a particular line that? I think it's a good use of S F.
I don't. Yeah, I absolutely. When we first started going in that direction, a lot of it was to get kids outside and to keep the activity levels up. So, you know, this is probably going to capture a group of people that don't do some of the other things. Are there any points? I mean, how do you know who won?
Uh, so you have to like try to tag the person below the waist with the ball. And, um, the last like the last person standing, who has got a
But you have to stay within the hexagon.
The last person that hasn't got hit. I love it.
It might be a situation here that So it's the idea of physical activity, you know, release from, you know, all the cognitive work that seems to do something that's fun, but also engaging and specifically building coordination, strategizing.
Uh, Mr. Henry, you still right there?
If I am.
Do we? Oh. Is it up to 600? Should we say up to 600? Did we? I mean, is the budget pretty firm that it's going to? Could we go over?
They came up with numbers around five, built in a little friction.
Okay.
Built with some more friction, you know, maybe a pretty favorable.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'm not sure about the the ground bench. So the ground acres, you know, it's a Figure number one.
I'll make a motion to approve up to $750 for the creation of Gaga pit.
Any further discussion?
Funds to be used out of, you know, the administration can put their heads together.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Guys.
Thank you.
It could be my sport. I've been searching for my sport. For years.
That sounds fine, but I'm not gonna buy you first.
You'd be safe.
We're right. Moving on to minutes, I will entertain a motion for minutes of October 2nd.
I'm chair of I may approval of minutes of October 2nd, public session, non-public, one, two, three, four, five, and six as written.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Following up with minutes of October 5th, public session and non-public one as written.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, minutes of October 10th. Public session and non-publics, one, two, and three as written.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
What's four? Valley View. Pick your podium.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Want me to podium or table?
Wherever you want.
Table.
You can kind of lay your stuff out.
So I'll start, um, event have a But last week was fire prevention week and it was really enjoyable watching our kids interact with the fire department, specifically Sierra. With the fire department, she was phenomenal with them. Um, if I could have her come and just run the assembly once a week, it would be a lot less chaotic for us. She, um, we were able to bring Sparky, which is the the fire dog. Unfortunately, they're going to have to change the name because it all the kids just refer to them as Marshall instead because Marshall is the Paw Patrol dog. And so they're looking at getting a felt replacement for Sparky up top. The next big thing I want to highlight is our letters training. For those of you who don't know, letters is a state-run science of reading initiative. Eighty-two percent of our teachers are currently enrolled in it. And it goes through the full science of reading and how you early language learners actually build phonemic awareness and reading skills and reading acquisition. Um, I know my wife started it last week and it is having overheard her listening to the videos. It is just a grad school course in science. Um, next week, I'm sorry, two weeks from now, it'll also be red, red ribbon week. Um, and so we'll be, um, doing our versions of that as well. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Is, oh, wait, sorry. I do. I I'm just noticing that you have this, uh, the Frank or treat.
Yes.
Is that a definite? I know that it was, they were thinking, I I just didn't know if that was a done deal.
So
Because I haven't seen it.
So it was something we were working on on the Valley View side.
Okay.
Um, I know the PTA was looking at merging something with Henry Wilson.
Okay.
Um, and so I went back and forth. Um, I was processing it on my side. And I was able to get it through with Jim and got approval on it last week.
Okay.
So I have teachers signing up and so keeping the smaller kids up at Valley View is my plan right now.
Excellent.
Continued up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Henry Wilson.
So the first thing I wanted to highlight was Bob Smith. So we have a new reading specialist who started, um, a young man, nice man. And Bob Smith, um, from maintenance realized that he had never seen him before. And he called him out on the carpet. He's like, sir, who are you? What are you doing in our school? Um, I just, I think that that is really, really important that these guys are taking care of our kids as much as we're taking care of our kids. So it was awesome. Um, Ryan let me know he was a little scared, um, but knew it was for good reason. And, um, he's wearing his ID badge all the time. So thank you, Larry, Bob, John, all the guys for doing a great job. Thanks, Jess, for the school supplies and Farmington House Pizza. So I really only have one thing that, well, congratulations, Vanessa, on your wedding. Really cool. Um, so school digger comes out before the state results come out. And, um, the state will be coming out. Like, we know how well we've done for state testing and everything, but we don't know how well we've done in comparison with other middle schools. We know that last year we were 79. Um, the year before we were 94 in the state for middle school, and then we went to 79. And we are now at 47. So we're in the top 35%.
Can I?
A lot of work. We have amazing kids. As you saw, small representation of our main kids. We have amazing parents, amazing teachers. Like, we are so lucky with everything that we can use and just the celebration behind it. So we're in cloud nine right now. So I have a couple of questions. In your report, you talked about, um, the game club that's met a couple of times.
Yes.
Does that include chess?
No.
Okay.
No, chess will be starting soon. Um, Vanessa was getting married and John Giles was ill.
Okay.
So that should be starting soon.
Okay.
But oh my gosh, game club is so full. There are so many kids in there. It's amazing to see them.
Awesome.
Yeah, they're having a great time.
Good. I just wanted to make sure because we're we're excited for chess and then I saw that there were two meetings. I was like, oh my God, we missed it. So that's good.
No, not yet.
And then the art teacher supplies.
Yes.
Cardboard.
Yep.
Could that be like egg curtains?
Sure.
Okay.
She'll take anything.
Great.
And any dishes you want broken, they want to do mosaics.
Okay.
Feel free to send them in.
Okay, that's all I got. Let the kids break them.
Well, I think finally, I think.
Hard to follow first kids and then it's out with their nice long sheet of paper. So, uh, basically the, my report is kind of going back a little bit. So schedules after we've kind of cleared that up, um, things have kind of settled here, uh, which is nice. Uh, it's kind of see the school kind of run like a school and not be so chaotic as the first couple of weeks. Um, and now we're really starting to kind of look at, um, academics and a lot of that is testing. So we did testing last week with star testing, um, with the ninth and 10th graders. And this week we have PSATs for juniors and some seniors who wanted to sign up for the early testing. And then next week we have ASVABs, though we're still trying to get it to sign up for those. On the other side of that, besides testing, we now have students now thinking about actually being students and doing some fun activities. So we have, um, homecoming week this week. They are doing some like dress up themes. And they have a dance on Saturday night. So it's nice to see students actually still do dances. I know, um, you know, the kind of, uh, was fading over time here. And, um, really, there's, uh, the other part for the seniors. So the seniors will start having some, um, people come in showing them stools. We have, um, on Thursday night, an in-person session for college, um, information so that students that are, you know, planning on or hoping to go to college gets that information and we have those all planned out for the year. So I put in the dates that we know for sure. Um, anything extra that comes in, I'll make sure that everyone knows. And, you know, hopefully get a lot of seniors in here to attend, um, get information for them.
Do we have any? I don't know, maybe a different time or in addition to, but any, um, trade schools or programs?
I think
As an alternative, like for those that might not want to go to the college, go to college route. I don't know.
Um, so the, uh, um, Mrs. Parisi is planning for a college year day. So we have it out to a bunch of different places. I think there's three places and I thought one was a beauty school. But I'm not positive on that. I just, I think that's what she told me today. So we're trying to get a big group of people in so the kids can come down and really kind of mosey on through. Uh, there's other places, uh, just coming in that, um, the guidance office and others have started putting together, um, so kids can kind of definitely see their options. But yeah, all all things are on the table. We're not just looking just for college, but yeah, the the trades are definitely important also.
What's the college where? Lillak Mall.
Oh, okay. Great, Great Bay.
Great Bay. They've been running a program called Bring Back the Trades and they've been like in different communities. But a friend of mine's daughter said, I think I'd like to weld. Okay, fine, whatever. She is excellent. She's done it twice. And she's, you know, it's just a very exciting program too. So if we don't bring some here, we might throw that out for kids. I think the last one was Portsmouth, maybe. So.
And there's lots of opportunity. I mean, that's probably the field that's most needed is the trade. So it's not something we should ignore. I mean, you know, we'll make really good money in the trades. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thanks. Thank you.
Do you want this list?
No.
Oh, thank you.
Selecting everybody who Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
All right. Next up, we are, we're at new business van purchases. Um, Jim, are you with us?
Wake up.
Email community, so.
Yes, I am.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about the van purchase situat- well, not that we have authorized the purchase, but possible purchase or, um, or do you want me to?
I'll just, I'll just say a little bit. Um, I got an email from Gil, um, saying that one of the vans is at a point where repair just isn't economically viable going forward. Uh, the needs that the van has incurred has totaled over $2,500. And that was just for one instance. Um, so he's requesting that the district look into, uh, a replacement of the van. And going forward, I'm recommending to the transportation department that, uh, a more stringent accounting of vehicle usage, mileage and upkeep be maintained so that we don't have uh, questions like this suddenly put before us. And I'm not faulting the current transportation manager or the past. I just think it's best practice that we maintain this sort of awareness on a regular basis instead of as we're finding out in this instance.
Right. Agreed. Joe?
Uh, Jim, I'm going to add to that. I I'd like to see us, um, I'd like to see a little more formal presentation. Um, I'd like to know the mileage. I'd like to know what the issues are. I'd like to know quotes that we've received from DePresio's as to what the cost will be to
There is, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. Am I missing something?
Yeah, it's in the board.
Didn't see it.
Nope.
Cut that.
Okay.
Leave that out, Mr. Henry. I'll I'll check it out. Sorry. I didn't see that report.
Yeah, it's, well, it says email, like it's listed as like an email. So that could have been
Yeah.
Um.
Okay. Yep. Good, good, good. Cause I, cause Gil did briefly mention it to me and I'd said, well, normally we would ask for certain information. So thank you.
Um, but we have not, the only thing we haven't, from what you just mentioned, we don't have any quotes on new vehicles because, well, I think, when did Gil send this? Thursday or Friday, I think, or, yeah. Um, so it was more of a FYI, can we start looking into the process? So I had them add the information to the board folder. And I don't know, you know, what I had said to Jim when he brought it to me was, I don't know if vehicles are still in short supply. I remember when we got them, the two vans, the last time, it was kind of we a waiting game. We had to order it.
They no longer make that dodge either. The caravan.
Okay.
Yeah, they are getting hard to find.
Yeah. Um, so I think we're just going to have to do a little bit of homework. If we can have Gil maybe start the process of searching to find out what kind of, well, 15 passenger vans, I think is probably the go-to at this point. They're probably most economical and serve the district the best. Did you have anything else on that, Gil? I mean, Jim?
No, but as you're talking, I'm I'm prepping a note to Gil on this so that he can get started on it.
Okay. Did any
Budget meeting coming up, those are things we're gonna have to look at.
Right.
You know, funding that, uh, Catholic service or
Right. Yep, absolutely. So
Did one of each.
Right. So it's definitely good timing because as we're getting into that season, so the sooner the better if he can get us that information. Anybody else have any thing they'd like to add? Next up is a revisit of the wellness policy that we had on last week's agenda. The report needed to be, what was it? Mac?
Say that again?
The report, the wellness report had to be within reviewed within two years, right?
Three years.
Three years. Okay. Um, and when we pulled up the report last week when we talked about it, the date on the bottom of the report was May 10th of 2021. Um, but we could not find the corresponding minutes to that. So I don't know if it's something, if that date was put there accidentally.
The other thing is it says review.
Right.
Point.
Yeah, so maybe
Not recording any votes. I checked two meetings before and two after.
Nothing.
See it. I checked my, uh, policy board folder.
Yeah, I
It might have simply been that date that it was brought up saying, okay, something to think about, stop thinking about it.
Right.
I did have a couple of questions on it.
Sure.
For revisions, um, third paragraph down, in order to have developed the following procedure, there's a team of a lot of people, some of which I haven't met yet. So if that's going to remain in the policy itself, then we should probably think about having that committee formed or having something done. It's in last week's board folder.
Right.
The thing.
Yeah.
And this next
Oh, cool. Do we, we had at one time a wellness committee. Is that? Yeah, if you just come up, so.
Wellness committee. I was never a part of that, but I did know that they met, um, throughout the year and they had I don't remember it happening recently, but I'd say
That's what I'm thinking too.
After COVID, that kind of probably disbanded, but they, there was a committee that met, um, there wasn't actual law.
Since COVID started and then they made free and reduce much free. And as part of that process, they eliminated a lot of the tools that you needed to fill out for the application. And it kind of led to this period of no one updating anything. Right. So that's, that's kind of where that happens.
Did you have something happen?
For a wellness committee. So there might have been anticipating back in the spring, a need to convene that committee to review this policy.
Okay.
The only other thing I have was on page two at the top, it reads, physical education and physical activity opportunities. Please refer to policy number 5130. Probably five years ago, we eliminated all the numbered and went to the lettered program. So again, I think before we formally adopt that.
Right.
I did print out a copy of 5130.
Oh, you did.
Basically just talks about daily physical activity developmentally appropriate.
Is 51, what is 5130 called?
Do you have the correlating?
I don't. I don't find one that that feeds over to it. I don't know. You didn't see anywhere in your research You didn't see anywhere in your research that 5130 became JDFAE or something? Okay. Point four.
Madam Chair, I do have a question. Has there ever been a stipend paid to teachers that were on the wellness committee?
I believe so. And that's what I was looking up right now.
We have a safety committee.
Right.
But in talking to the nurses last week, she asked me about that. And I, I don't know that we've recently had a wellness committee, you know, a stipend.
Right.
So you might want to consider that and if we go back to that.
Right.
Before Lynn Olden retired, she was always, I think she headed it up at one point, but.
I can remember Diana Donido, I was on the committee, but I, it was meeting during the day and it's time I couldn't attend. So she had me in, but always sent me the minutes. But that was five, four years ago. Oh, no, I've only been on three.
Right, oh, yeah. Okay. So if we want to, we can clarify those and then give it a blessing at our next meeting, if that's agreeing with everybody. Yep. Anyone else have anything on that one?
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's new business or not. I'm starting to see a lot of fundraisers, virtual fundraisers on websites and things tied to different fundraising groups, you know, football or whatever. I'm, I don't wanna say concerned. It comes to mind that the, the people that are involved in originating those, we probably need to make sure that we follow the policies that are related to that. And unfortunately, I left it on my notes at home. But there are some very specific things. And the thing that concerns me probably the most is it goes up on Facebook or on a website and it tells you what the donations are. If it's going through Venmo, that I would think is either going to a personal Venmo account or--
Some kind of organization.
Something.
A sports club.
Yeah, so that's a step that I'm not sure that our standing policies allows for an outside party to collect.
Most school policies would actually dictate, if they're fundraising under association in any way with the school, then our policies become primary there. We have control.
Right.
We should be managing that money through our system.
JJF, maybe, JJFE and R. And those, those really dictate how the money has to be handled.
Right.
Because these are, these are all auditable files. They definitely need to go into student activity and those are audited, so.
And that was recently brought up. I had a couple of parents from high school volleyball. And the parents wanted to know where that money was going and what it was being used for and where all those funds were going. You know, is it going because, you know, the coaches buying socks? Or, you know, for the girls before her games? Or is it going toward, you know, uniforms? So I'm glad you brought that up, because that was actually-- I heard about that.
Yeah, me too.
So.
We can add it to--
It would be nice to--
We can review that policy. We can add it to--
I think we actually looked at it.
And I don't think like, I don't think people, I think they're doing it out of the best interest, like--
Exactly.
More often than not, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I certainly don't--
Find anything or do anything wrong, you know. It's probably used for the students, whatever, maybe.
But if you've got one step that is not auditable, if you will, you know, went into Joe Smo's Venmo and then he cut a check to the school.
Yeah.
There's a step in there that they may frown on. And fortunately or otherwise, student activity accounts have--
And there might be something, I haven't looked recently, but there might be something added on this, you know, boilerplate from School Board Association in regards to Venmo, where it's becoming--
Right.
But that's a common currency now.
And, and I, I don't use it and I don't understand it.
Right.
If it's, if, if I'm correct, could it be tied to the checking account for that individual checkbook, like?
Correct.
Per--
Yeah.
That's correct. Yeah. It's a, it's a banking platform, if you will. So they finance the transfer of funds. And that does involve bank accounts for organizations, individuals, you know, sole sellers, proprietors, what have you. But and, and it's not as taxable as the government would like it to be either. So there's actually, there's an additional layer of scrutiny on that.
It just, it just caught my eye because I've seen more than one coming up. And I've seen in a couple of reports recently that upcoming Valley View is gonna do a fundraiser and this and that. So I kind of like, maybe we should get a, review the policy and make sure that it's running that way. Because it's, and again, once again, it's certainly no reflection on the people that are doing it. I totally applaud fundraisers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you to all the parents, right?
And maybe just Mary, to go along with that, just letting, maybe we can come up with something. So all administration staff, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's the chess--
Yeah.
Like, you know, chess club, that's what they're raising money for. Or if it's volleyball or basketball, like, coaches know that way. Everyone just has the information because it's not, like, how do they know, right? Making sure that they know and they're aware and they're taking--
And it never really was an issue, cuz in the past, it was always live and in person.
Right.
Right.
So I guess--
Right, that's why I wonder if-- Because I haven't--
Like, we didn't really know. Like, people didn't know, right? So.
Yeah, it's as close as the cash as you can get, really.
Right.
Electronic standpoint. So that's anything with cash or just these like cool little payment things are just super, they're not controllable for the district. So it only would enhance the district's position in this to review that policy and entitle your administration to issue a cease and desist if we have to.
We did look at it on December 20th, but at the time, I think it was, again, something that needed to be reviewed before year end, something like that. So it was sort of--
Glued in with the lock, yeah.
Well, the content of it is fine, but I think it might be missing--
Right, there might be more clarity from the state in regards to electronic payments.
Right.
Because it is becoming--
Yes, yeah. No, definitely. I've had to, I've had to have a few uncomfortable conversations about this stuff before, so.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yep.
We do have a fundraiser proposal form that is supposed to be filled out by all--
Right.
Whatever schools are doing a fundraiser.
Correct.
You're probably familiar with that because--
Yes, that's what affiliates you with--
Right.
The district. And that's what creates the monetary relationship where we can apply our policy, our policy. So, you know, outside of that, it's kind of even more of an immediate, like, you didn't really come to the school to begin with. You know, you're not a-- This isn't a partnership, this is--
Now--
In addition to bookkeeping, it's also supposed to be so that the building principals can communicate with each other with how many, how many fundraisers are happening at once?
Right.
How much can you saturate people?
Right.
And in a collaboration, they can maybe each pick a month or something like that. So that every time you open social media--
It's not--
71.
Somebody jingling there.
And, and then I think at its core, it just best suits the purpose of our district as a whole, and that's to make sure these kids are being treated fairly. Everyone reaps the same benefit and has the same opportunity, so.
Now, with the, you might know this, I don't know. Could the school create their own Venmo? Like, I've seen it like type non, like, I don't know how--
Yeah, barring any specific law or RSA I'm not aware of. I would, I would assume that any method that, you know, any, that any reputable organization or with the school, sometimes the organizations kind of split off on their own. If it's like a true booster type of situation. And then, and then they'll sell their own gear and take that money and use it for their club. But that's, they're saying that.
Right.
So the, the, the question is, you know, where's the moneyness of the water? You know, at what point does that become a little more not like we're saying malicious, but maybe some innocent, I just wanted to be helpful, but I didn't know how. So that's, you know, it's just educating our community on how to best do that. Not only serve the children better anyways, so.
Right. Because if the district had a Venmo, we could each sport, you know, school sanctioned sport, I suppose, could use that Venmo.
Sure. We can certainly, you know, have some sort of, just an idea. We can have a form that you need to complete with that so we can trace the payments, you know, so that way--
One of the things that's very clear in the policy is that any fundraiser has to have a written--
Receipt.
Right, like--
Written receipt, yes, but I was going with what the purpose is.
Right.
So that, let's say, we have a generic Venmo and we've got three fundraisers going on. You have to be able to sort them, so.
Right, like, please, no, cuz in Venmo, like, when you make a payment, there's a spot for a note that you can just basically see. So when you would print that Venmo statement, then they would know that those transactions were for--
Yeah, cuz you could have--
I could just see that being a nightmare.
Me too.
No, I don't know. I was just--
I don't even know if the ones that are running now are--
No, no, I'm just saying, like, a district-wide Venmo for all the different things. Cuz I mean,
Right.
How, how I understand the, the student activity accounts is like, if the junior class does a fundraiser, the money goes to the office, it gets put into the checking account earmarked for--
Not, not to interrupt, you're, you're on the right track. So, so the way it works is we have our general fund, which is one bank account. But each student activity account, I believe, is a separate bank account.
They have checking accounts.
Every single one.
Each school, each school.
Each office, each school, yeah, yeah.
So I mean--
But then making track within that account, like, what's going to volleyball, what's going to--
Exactly. So that's where you'd have to establish some sort of like receipt or some way to, to validate, validate the information that you're receiving so we can put it into the right revenue, you know?
Right, like, if I'm raising money for my soccer team, you have to, like, right now, like, if it's just going to me as a coach, like, who's keeping, right, no--
It's a great question. I mean, let's dig into it. So ideally--
I'm doing a great job. I'm coming up with this idea to raise money, so I have it for my soccer team and the kids and their warmups and all that extra stuff that the school can't provide, which is great.
Right.
But then it's--
This is my guess. There's probably a form of established policy that if you talk to someone who does the job, they go, oh, we've done it this way forever.
Right.
And that, and that's really translating back to the moment when they went from a one-person system to a two-person type of system where, like, where our policy really takes over. Our policy should mandate two people be counting money at any time, so on and so forth. And that, and those are kind of the protections there that you have to find. So I mean, if you're gonna fundraise, you need a big grid in front of you of what you're selling, who you're selling it to, how much money they're saying that they paid you, so on and so forth. If you have a way, if, if the payment bounces, to go back to them and say, now you owe us this and a banking fee. And it's a little bit more complicated, it, it, once you get past the cash. But it, it is doable too. And, and, and then if the district's offering the solution to the, to the parents, they're gonna welcome that. So I think there's a bit of up and down here to, to this electronic solution type of thing. And you're, and you're touching on both of it. Yeah, I mean, it sounds chaotic. I think if you set up the right process, you're okay. But it's really having the two controls. So I mean, we, we have to have a way to validate what is sold and we have to have a way to validate the revenue coming in to the right spots.
That is JJFE and R. Those are the policies. You guys got lucky, cuz I left my marked up agenda home.
And the other new business. Before we move on to unfinished business. Mary?
Yes.
I have a couple too, when you're done.
Yeah. I'm thrilled that Larry is here because this is--
He looks thrilled.
Yep. Dude. The sprinkler system at Valley View, that's ongoing, perhaps?
Yep, bye. Fine, sir.
Here it comes.
Yes, it was starting to--
Okay. So we're in a new budget. Here's where I'm going with this. Looks like we're going to have probably healthy fund balance. We made a vote to take, I want to say 120, 120,000 out of a capital reserve. That probably hasn't hit the trustees yet because we haven't, we're doing it out of fund ten and then it's, we'll apply to them for reimbursement. So if we reversed that and put a vote on the table tonight to take the entire sprinkler system out of unexpendable fund balance, we wouldn't have to put the other half off to begin with. We could make that happen. And if, we would need to do that. If we're going to do that and, and dedicate those funds, we'd have to do it before the DOE and the MS-25 are done. Because that information is something that's going to be noted on the 25. So just be thinking about it, I guess. Because the other thing that would do would be to leave 120 grand in that capital reserve. And the capital reserves have been kind of lean, leaning, leaning out somewhat, so.
It wouldn't be a bad thing to do.
Yeah. My thought base--
70 and 40, 70,000.
Yeah. Yeah. My thought was more along the lines to, if we've got fund balance, to dedicate it to that. And again, cuz I think what happened was when the contingency fund line went away--
Right.
You could only do part of what you needed.
Right now, the only, one thing that I'll bring up is they're working during the school hours. Once they get to the, the purpose for the area, I'm not sure, they're not going to be able to do that with students in session. Because they use a good cafeteria here and busy. They started in the, it would be peaceful, doing so much each day, what they could.
What's the longevity of the program? Let's say they had a Monday through there uninterrupted. Is it three weeks?
It, I had to plan the first, first two days they were there, they only had two people. This week, they've had four people working on it. It's, it's a long process because they can't stage a lot of the stuff. Outside, they have to bring the pipe in, carry it up, through the ladder, I think they had it, and then they're cutting stuff up there. Replacing means first, then doing the damage, as they thought.
I'm just wondering about school vacations coming up because we haven't gotten here yet.
That was mine. Do they have a plan on when they want to finish it?
He doesn't say deadline. I know that the reason they had just started Thursday is because they, they took longer than they thought they would. They had a big job down in the boys' office.
I threw it out there. It's--
Is that a motion?
I think I'm brave enough to make that motion.
I'll fucking it. Any further discussion?
Okay. Well, it's actually gonna be two. We would have to rescind the vote, reconsider the vote where we opted to take it out of CRF. And that would be a done deal. And then the second motion tonight, if it passes, would be to take it out of unexpendable fund balance. It's a little bit tricky because if we don't have that much left over, but I'm, what, what I've been kind of looking at, I don't think 220,000 is gonna be an issue. Again, the, the other side of that-- Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. That money normally would have gone back to the taxpayers. The 100,000 that got, that didn't get used will automatically go back. So it's kind of like a, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take from you here, but I'm gonna give you this one back. So I don't think it will have a devastating tax rate. But again, part of it is that this becomes a line item in the DOE 25, if I remember correctly. Yeah. Right, that's right.
And I think it's cleaner that way and keeps our capital reserve funds a little more whole.
Yeah.
So because--
Yeah.
So your first motion is to rescind--
And I don't happen to have the date that we-- Reconsidered--
Prior vote.
The date of, yes, prior vote, we can, we can find it.
That's what I was just looking at. So on June 19th,[1787.52] Um, we had discussed, uh, it was. But that was the one that Tim was at and said that we needed to repost, so we had to table it to June twenty-nine.
Right, and that will also, yes, correct.
And then we tabled it again.
Well, on June twenty-ninth, that was the last day.
Right.
And that was also posted incorrectly.
Right.
Right, because it was forty and seventy.
But then?
But then, what was, that's what I was trying to go back and look at.
I think it was.
So then on July twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Right? It was to extend up to the forty thousand in the construction renovation and then up to seventy from capital improvements.
Right, right.
But I don't, I was also just trying to look at the minutes to see what we actually.
That that did, that did, that did pass to take, to take that money out of those two. Because that part we knew we had.
Right.
The contingency fund went away. Our meeting was June twenty-ninth. And the last day of the fiscal year, that there was a line item in the budget, a hundred thousand dollars. Generic contingency. So we were using that for half of the Valley View. And then the other half to take out of a couple of capital reserves to get the whole ball of wax, but. We had two incorrect postings of the public hearings, the last one being June twenty-ninth. So June thirtieth was the end of the, in fact, that was a Friday, I think. But so we lost that money, but because it had been in there as a contingency fund, it automatically goes back to the taxpayer. So.
Yeah, so it's kind of.
So the the dates that you found that we.
Twenty-fourth.
Looking it up right now. So I'm looking at the minutes right now. So it's July twenty-fourth is when it was on the agenda and I have it checked off. So I was just trying to go back to the July twenty-fourth. That's a bad, so that I'd have to look in probably what, August? Sorry.
We can.
Right.
Right, the minutes. Can we put the motion on the table and fill in the the blank of the vote?
We sure can.
I'm sure that can work.
Yep.
So that's, my motion is to reconsider the vote of, and then. That would be my motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And my second motion would be to. Put it in a contingency fund, taking that dollar amount from unexpendited fund balance. But it needs to go into a line called contingency fund, otherwise it can't be spent.
Oh, second.
Oh, you did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I think it was like.
I was, yeah, because we did, we did a hundred thousand contingency and then a hundred and ten. From two different capital reserves, the forty and the seventy.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I would possible inflation and things at this point, what'd you say it was, two thirteen? Maybe we should, let's. Yeah, let's, let's, um, make that motion to put two hundred and twenty thousand. Into a contingency fund. Coming from unexpendited fund balance. Two twenty should cover it, or do we want to go? Higher? Well. Two twenty is the last quote that you had, and I think if there's, you know, a few thousand here or there, we can take it out of a maintenance account.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Property maintenance or something like that.
Did we vote on that?
No, no, because I'm still thinking about the number. I'm still thinking about the number. I may be.
Yeah, hold on, I'm looking up the quote right now. Who do we end up going with? Capital buyer, right? And that quote did not change from the initial one that we received on May first. And we ended up going with the. So that exact number is two two zero nine ten, so two hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred ten dollars.
But I really think with labor costs and everything, maybe we want to throw an additional twenty into the contingency fund for that. If we can keep it penny for penny to the contract, that's fine. We just don't use all the contingency, but. Um, I think I'm gonna be a little more comfortable with like two forty, two forty-five. Spending everybody's money. And that also.
What's the motion?
The motion was to.
What number are you going with, two forty?
Two forty-five. And like you said, if he doesn't use it all, it leaves it for anything else that pops up contingency-wise. So that would be my motion to put, um, two hundred and forty-five thousand in contingency fund. And the funds to come from unexpendited fund balance. Contingency, you don't, I mean, that's what we're going to do with it, but.
So I'm making sure everyone at home knows.
Yeah, capital reserve would have to be specifically for what it's written for, but a contingency fund. Because up until we first started talking about this, there was a hundred thousand just sitting there with no purpose behind it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. That's my unfinished business.
That's it? Come on, Mary.
Only thing that was voted on, and it was, it was just a summary.
Yep, but we just, we just re- undid that, so.
Jim?
Um, where are we at with the handbooks in the schools?
A good question, Jim.
Yes, go ahead.
Just just wondered where we stood with the handbook. Student handbook.
As of today, the principals all got back to me with their final edits. I will get the updated edition to you.
Sounds good.
Wow, alrighty.
Hot off the premise.
Right, I guess so. Um, and the second thing, I was just wondering now that we're just over a month in, if we should talk about bringing back office hours. It seems super successful at the end of last year, so I wanted to see if we wanted to. Do that again in the fall before, you know, if we were going to, it would be within the, I would say, the next thirty days, because then it's holiday season and.
Right, it's gonna get crazy.
So if we wanted to do it this fall, it kind of, let's talk about what's got going.
Yeah. What does everybody think? Yea or nay? Do you have feelings one way or the other?
I think it was worthy. Again, we have a lot of new staff.
Yeah.
So. I think that we have to. Again, just explain the boundaries of what the purpose of office hours are. Because based on some emails that we've received earlier this school year from staff members, returning staff members. I think that got a little fuzzy. So I'm all for it, and if we do it, I'd like to start at Valley View. Because they kind of, well, Henry Wilson, because they kind of got the tail end of things last year, so I thought maybe we could pick up with them this year. The high school got several office hours. Not that they don't need them, but.
No, I agree. Or is it something that, do we want to send out? Like a survey and see what staff thinks? I don't know.
Yeah, because there's, they may still be settling.
Right.
You know, and all of a sudden, it's gonna be the Christmas break and they're like, what was that all about? And that, having a break at that time of the school year. Not that I want them to spend their holidays thinking about things, but if they know what's coming up.
Yeah.
Just a thought. Um, I think the intent is well and good, but I don't know that the administration's had enough time. To fully establish, um, the relationships necessary. I've, I've talked in the past, generally speaking, about, um. Um, a certain point of view that culturally has existed. And I I think we're collectively, including the school board, uh, trying to make some efforts to. Not necessarily redefine the culture, but perhaps take the culture in a different direction. I'm not saying that you shouldn't go ahead with this, but I I do think, uh, some time needs to be considered. In the work that we're trying to do.
Agreed.
I agree. I was just about to say that, Jim. I was, you can't see me. This is Nicole. I was just about to say the same thing, um, when we were talking about that. Mary was talking about holidays. Um, just being an educator myself, I know that, you know, we're only in October. There's a lot going on. There's a lot that's changed. So I cannot agree more with you. I think that it is important. Um, I think, you know, staff should have a say to see at some point if this is something that they would like to continue. Via a survey, but I do feel like it should be. Well after the holidays.
Yeah.
In order to have some time for adjustment.
The only. Alternative opinion I have to that is that it is nice for new staff to know who we are.
Right.
You know, and and. Maybe, I mean, I just, I I just think it's, you know, a lot of, we heard from so many staff last year. Wow, we've never met our school board members. And you were all. Lucky enough to be at opening day, and I had a flat and couldn't get down here, but, um, you know, we also got feedback on that, like we. I've heard, I had people say, never seen the school board at an opening day, and it was really nice. Um, so. Let's, let's put some feelers out. Maybe we can put some feelers out to folks.
Football in their court, because we're willing to do it.
Right.
We just need to know their.
Yeah.
What, where they want to settle with the whole program.
Absolutely. Okay.
I do have one more.
I knew you would.
The brain kicked in. I, I. I mentored my, and my budget committee reports I do Wednesday to the budget committee.
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up on nine, the financials. That's our time, that's our max time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Cancel that, no, my.
I'm glad you're on top of it.
Yeah.
Teamwork.
Yeah.
Alright. That was all of our unfinished business, right? Financials. Back to, um. Yeah, quickly, we got there.
Back to this one.
So budget committee report.
We can get some updated.
Yeah, what you provided last month was perfect. Absolutely, yep. So if you could get it to me for Wednesday, I'll get it over to Erica and Joe. My son's name is Joey, sorry.
Not Joey, don't say it, don't say it.
And then, um, yeah, they'll get that distributed for next week.
Okay.
If they want something different, they're not shy.
They, oh, yeah, they're definitely not shy.
Yeah, nope, open door.
Is that a meeting that he was potentially going to join?
This is the October twenty-fifth meeting at seven, if you wanted to.
Let's get it started. Twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Where's that one held?
It's at the municipal building, it's downtown, like across from Crowley's, across from Route seventy-five.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a really nice building.
Yeah, as soon as you walk in, you just go down the hallway and to the, immediately to the right.
Excellent.
Hold on, you just sent him to the ladies room, I think.
Or the jail.
Down the hall to the break.
Sometimes bathrooms are important to know.
I didn't send him up there.
A little hazing on.
As he's casually wandering around. Don't play with the elevator.
Any other? Updates?
No, I hope to have the, uh, kind of like, and a rough idea of where we are for the DOE. After I have a conversation with the auditors this week.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we can kind of go from there, so you'll get some more info from me on that probably by next week.
Um, I haven't gone through, I know they set up. For the the audit. Kind of like a box type situation.
Yes, they usually.
Um, have they scheduled the ti- uh, time to? Come to the SAU, or are they doing everything?
They were here today.
So begin today. Okay.
This is why we wanted to just get.
Yeah. He did say the grants were less. And he said that they can't really do much more. And I said, well, that's why we wanted you to come in. Right. You know, so, um, tomorrow they're gonna be working from their office. They don't feel that, they they felt they had everything they needed.
To get started.
Right, to get started.
Initial approach, yeah.
Need to come in. Okay.
Yeah, they tried to rebuild the whole ledger, I know, kind of from conversations with other auditors. And they have usually some programs to do that, so they take all of our stuff in Excel and then they have to rebuild it all, so it takes them some time. And that's why it was just crucial, like, kind of get, get them in here and get that going.
Right.
Um, and not, not fall behind, so that way in November, we call them and we're rushing, like, hey, can you come in? And then they have five other school districts that were not easy, before Christmas. Um, and then you don't get the attention you deserve, so, but, um, I'm happy to put that started.
They'll be back Wednesday.
Wednesday would be perfect.
Okay, awesome. Um, any other questions on financials while we have math with us?
Probably had a good one. Learning quickly.
Literally picked up the wrong stack. I get out of work at five thirty, I'm here by quarter past six. I try to fit some supper in there somewhere.
Somewhere. Alright.
Worst case, if with the board's permission, if something really pops, I can email him.
Anytime, anyone can. Uh, I don't play favorites, so anything, anyone needs.
Alright, back to public participation. Don't all jump at once. Uh, next meeting is next Monday, October twenty-third. We have some manifests to sign. And I will make a motion to go into non-public session one, RSA ninety-one, A three, two, A B C. Personnel, A B C, I don't think is correct, though. But it's.
Whatever the.
Whatever the letters for personnel are.
Actually, ma- madam chair, before we take your vote to go into non-public.
Yeah.
Uh, manifest signing, I did notice on the manifests, and I I don't need to. Bring up the reimbursement name, but I did notice on the manifest that we reimbursed an individual. One forty-eight twenty-five for background checks. A recent motion that I made was to reimburse bus drivers the one hundred dollar additional fee over and above the forty-eight twenty-five. Which is that first grade. It looks like we reimbursed it all, and that was not the intention of the motion.
It was. For the first one, but that state, that new state process is the hundred dollars and another forty-eight twenty-five.
Oh, it is.
That's the second one.
So then their total is like, one is basically almost two hundred. Okay, I didn't know that.
First one.
I didn't know that. But I I think I worded the, I may have worded the motion an additional hundred dollars above, so.
I think it was the minutes that we, I mean, it's right here at the top, and I think the motion was something very similar to anything above.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Then we're good. Thank you.
Review those minutes.
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. All that to say. We are, um. Non-public session one, under personnel. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.